It's the second public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries. This is a public hearing and we have to start right at 6 o'clock. So, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce our consultant, Jeff Simone- Simone- Simoneati. Sorry about that, it's hard through the mask. This is our second public hearing on the redistricting of the districts that we have using the 2020 census data. Tonight, Jeff is going to just give a short presentation on the background of what the law requires us to do, but also will now reintroduce the data that we've been waiting for on the census. And I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to him. Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Simonetti. I'm with the National Demographics Corporation. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding the redistricting process. And do we have the presentation up? Yes. So, this will be the second public hearing this evening, and we're going to be talking about the project deadlines, some of the key next steps in hearings, as well as the timeline that we have to meet. And as Roxanne was mentioning, we have the official 2020 data from the Census Bureau that are put into the existing districts. And so you can see what has changed over the last couple of years regarding both the population as well as the demographic profile. And that is going to be a key driver into what we'll be looking at for the next process here coming forward. So, as you know, in the city of Indio, council members hold four-year terms, and the elections are staggered by district. So currently, for the November 22 election, districts 2, 3, and 4 will be up. And districts 1 and 5 terms end in November of 2024. For the purposes of the redistricting, remember that the new district lines that will be drawn through this process will apply to not only the elections in 2022, but also in 2024 and thereafter. There's a specific process that we need to go through here regarding the hearings, as well as a very specific deadline that we have to meet to be able to get an approved map and get that to the Riverside County Register of Voters in time for the November election. There's four hearings that are required for this process, and we are currently in one of the two initial, what we call pre-draft map hearings. They're held, we had the first one on November 3, and this evening, December 1, is the second one. These are held prior to the release of the draft maps. And this evening, as well as on the first one, we'll be talking about the education process and be seeking input from both the general public as well as the council on communities of interest within the district. We'll talk more specifically about the specific laws that are associated with that. We had two different sets of census data released. We talked about this the last time, where the Census Bureau has their official dataset for the 2020 census that was released in mid-August. However, you'll see that we use what's called the California statewide database for the purposes of redistricting. And that, you'll see here, as we talk about the prisoner-adjusted 2020 redistricting data. For the purposes of California redistricting, the US Census counts prisoners physically within the prison. But for the purposes of population counts for particular cities and jurisdictions, California takes those prisoner, that prisoner data and matches them back to their last known address. So it's called zeroing out the prison population. And that's what the California statewide database we use that was released in late September. Then we'll have two draft map hearings, which will be scheduled for January 19 and February 16. Those are two public hearings that are basically to discuss and review the draft maps that are submitted, and also to discuss the election sequence. So there's a two-step process here. Not only redetermining what the new district lines will be, but you also have the ability to say which elections will be held in 2022 and which elections will be held in 2024. We have a final map adoption hearing, and which will be scheduled on March 2. And the final maps have to be posted at least seven days prior to the adoption. So we have a little bit of lead time that we have to make sure that we get the final maps posted and ready to go before then. This entire process has to be complete by no later than April 17, and the maps have to be submitted to the Riverside County Register of Voters by no later than that date to be able to qualify for the new districts for the November election. This is an important slide, because this is the set of laws and goals that govern the process and gives you a reason as to why we need to go through the redistricting process here in 2021. There are three sets of laws and criteria that are associated with the redistricting process. The first one is on the left-hand side, and that is the federal laws you'll see in the red box on the left. And it specifically pertains to the Federal Voting Rights Act. It has two major components. We have to have a generally equal population. And you'll see here that this applies to you. There is a case law that states that we can have a no greater than 10% population deviation from, and that's determined from the difference between in population between the largest district and the smallest district. You'll see in a moment here that with the way that your current districts are drawn, with the 2020 census data in, you are just slightly above that 10%, which means it's necessitating you to go through the redistricting process. Second key component of the Federal Voting Rights Act also says that there are going to be no racial gerrymandering. In the middle, in the light blue box there, we have what's called the California Criteria for Cities. And that specifically pertains to AB 849, which is called the Fair Maps Act. It's some big, long acronym that I can never remember what it stands for, but it's AB 849 that was passed in 2019. It sets out specific criteria for the cities. And these are, importantly to remember, are rank-ordered criteria. So first, districts have to be geographically contiguous. When practicable, they have to have undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. And we'll talk more specifics as to what those, what a definition of community of interest is. But it specifically means a socio-economic or geographic area that should be kept together for its effective, purposes of its effective and fair representation. The districts have to have easily identifiable boundaries, so things like major streets, rivers, those types of things. And they have to be compact. And when we say compact, it means that you do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And as a universal prohibition, districts shall not favor or discriminate against a political party. Finally, on the right-hand side, we have, in the dark blue box, the, what we call other traditional redistricting principles. You can factor in things like future population growth. So say, for example, you have a particular area in the city that you know there's going to be a specific plan with a significant amount of development, or a large set of apartment projects that you know there's going to be significant population coming into that area. You have to draw boundaries that are within that population deviation of 10% that we talked about. But you could slightly underfill that district if you know that there's going to be significant development coming in there. Finally, when we talk here about respecting voters' choices, continuing in office, and then minimizing the voter's shift into different election years. As we discussed, the districts are segmented in terms of which districts vote in 2022 and which districts vote in 2024. But say, for example, you're currently in a 2022 district, but your line gets moved, and then you get moved into a 2024 district. We can look to try to minimize the number of voters that get shifted between those different election years. So here is the new 2020 demographics, and a couple of key and important things to look at here. This is a table that shows the breakdown of population and demographic data of the existing districts, but with the updated 2020 data. You'll see here, your total population right now is 89,518. And you'll see what we have here, what's called the deviation from the ideal and your percentage deviation. Basically, the ideal, it's a kind of a nebulous term, but it's essentially a mathematical formula to say, okay, if you had perfectly divided districts, you take your total population of 89,518 and divide it by the number of districts. So in this instance, 5. That's how you get your ideal number. And then the deviation, where you see percentage there, is the difference in percentage from the largest district, which in this instance is District 1, to District 4, which is the smallest district. That percentage that you take gets you to 10.08%. So you are slightly above the 10% allowable deviation, which is necessitating that we need to go through the redistricting process. You'll also see here that there are two important components in terms of looking at the population figures. You'll see both total population and breakdowns of certain demographic characteristics. You see Hispanic, non-Hispanic, white, African-Americans, and Asian-Americans. And then you'll see down on the bottom here, we have citizen voting age population. Now, this is particularly important to look at when we are looking at, are there protected-class-majority districts, for example. So you can see here, right now, in terms of the citizen voting age population, I should mention that when we reference citizen voting age population, that's any citizen within the city that is over 18 years of age. It does not mean that he or she are registered to vote. It's just anyone who is a citizen who is of eligible voting age. And you'll see here currently that we have three districts, 2, 3, and 4, that are currently majority Hispanic seats in terms of citizen voting age population. So here is a map of the existing council districts and showing each one of the districts geographically to see where the differentiation in terms of population is. So you can see that District 1, again, is the largest population. And District 4, the purple-colored district, is now the smallest district. An important thing to remember, you see, say, for example, District 4 that's at minus 5.42%. You may think, does that mean that District 4 shrunk? The answer to that is no. It's just that the other districts grew at a faster relative rate than District 4 did. And so it's not, it's not that when you see the smaller percentages or, you know, the minus, for example, in Districts 3 and 4, that doesn't mean that those districts shrunk in population. It's just that the other districts grew at a faster pace than those. The other thing, and we talked about this at the last hearing, was what we call the citizen voting age population data. And these maps here show the citizen voting age population by census block. And you'll see here, for each one of the maps that I'm going to show you here, there are color-coded. And the color coding is the same for each one of these. So the purple and bluish colors are lower percentages for a particular demographic. And then the orange, yellowish and orange colors are the higher percentages. So you can see here that there's a pretty significant amount of Hispanic citizen voting age population across the city. This is Asian citizen voting age population, as well as African-American citizen voting age population data. And there are some areas, particularly within Districts 4 and 5, that have some areas of significant African-American citizen voting age population. So now let's talk more specifically about neighborhoods and communities of interest, because this is what we'd like your feedback for this evening and from the general public as well as to what you think are your neighborhoods and communities of interest and how you want to define them. So when we talk about a neighborhood, it's exactly what you would think it would be. Neighborhoods can have a physical features defining a neighborhood boundary. They could be natural, so mountains, rivers, streams, those types of things. They could have unnatural dividing lines, highways, major roads, canals, those types of things. Or they can be an area around a particular landmark, so a park or school, a downtown, a certain particular area in a neighborhood or other landmarks. Communities of interest, as I mentioned, and this is specifically coming out of AB 849 or the Fair Maps Act, has a very specific definition. And it's in red there, as you'll see. It's called, "A community of interest is a population that shares a common social or economic interest that should be included within a single district for its purposes of effective and fair representation." So it's an area that the public and council deem an area that is connected and should be included within one district for its purposes of effective and fair representation. So what does that mean in practice? It's really taking that geographic area and then adding a shared issue or characteristic on top of that. So it could be shared social or economic interests. It'd also be an area that is similarly impacted by either city or county's policies. And we're asking you to tell us your community's story. So, would this community that you're identifying benefit from being included within a single district for its purposes of effective and fair representation? Or would it benefit from having multiple representatives? That's a policy choice that we're asking you to give us, give us feedback on, and something that you can, you can, again, give us feedback on what you think are those districts. And again, should it be within, have one representative or multiple representatives for its best representation? So this evening, we'll be having discussion and action. Giving us, during the public hearing, we'll receive testimony and provide us feedback on areas that meet each one of the AB 849 definitions of neighborhoods and communities of interest. Finally, let's talk about the key dates and next steps. Again, we mentioned that we had our first public hearing on November 3. Tonight is the second pre-draft map hearing to identify neighborhoods and communities of interest. The next two hearings in both January and February of 2022 will be post-map hearings. So we will be releasing and be discussing with Roxanne and the city manager to talk about, we'll be putting together an online mapping tool for you, where the citizens can submit maps for where they think the election line should be drawn. And so we can get those maps in, we'll process them, and be able to talk about them at public hearings. And so the 3rd and 4th hearings on January 19 and February 2 will be to discuss those draft maps, give us edits and changes that you may want, or to bring back, bring back different maps. And then the 4th hearing will also be the introduction of the ordinance. And second reading is scheduled for March 2 of 2022. You'll see here, we gave us, gave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room, because this, again, this process has to be done. There's a hard deadline on April 17 of November 20, excuse me, April 17 of 2022, to be able to qualify that map to get to the registrar of voters for the November elections. And again, these maps will apply to the November of 2022 elections and beyond from there. So with that, that concludes my presentation for this evening, and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. This is a public hearing item. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to open the public hearing. And we do have one request to speak here in person. And that would be Adriana Rivera.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Wayman Furman and Mayor Protem Oscar Ortiz. As a person that was invested during the campaign trail a few years back, it feels quite gratifying to be here in this moment. And I just wanted to share that the amount of people that came out to support this night is evidence to the fact that you are from this community. And I am very proud, along with everyone else, to be here. So, that being said, I am Adriana Rivera. I come to you from Valencia Avenue, Sun Gold Community. I've been living there for about a year. And to the north of me is Monroe Elementary, excuse me, Hoover Elementary. To my west is Dominguez Park and Monroe Avenue. To my south is Bliss Avenue. And to my east is Miles Park. Over Thanksgiving, I took a bike ride in the neighborhood, something that's very important to me, being physically active, working in physical therapy. I like to be outdoors, and I was on a bike ride. My intent was to go to see the Indio murals. I was going to take a tour de Indio murals on my bike. Myself, my prima, and my partner was on her roller skates. And it was quite a pleasant time. I encourage others in the neighborhood to go outside and kind of be in the sidewalks and in the parks. We only made it as far as Quick and Easy Convenience Store and saw the Hummingbird and Flower mural on the corner of King and Miles Avenue. And then we ended up making our way back home. But I also wanted to highlight Miles Park. Recently had goal frames for soccer put in. I have yet to take my crack at those, but I'm looking forward to it as well. So, yeah, for me, community means, you know, being access to our parks. And I know things are coming, the Jackson Park. Sports Complex is to be coming in the future. I'm very excited for that. Recently, I did notice closures on Miles Avenue. The Indio Food Park, along with Little Street Studio, were, I believe they were creating great opportunities for community to gather. And I hope the city continues to support businesses like that in the future. And last thing, in October, I attended an open-mic night at the Coachella Valley Art Center, right here on Town Street. I danced along to Lyricist and Vocalist. I was moved to emotion, laughter, and tears by the poets. And I invite all others to come out December 10, right here at C-Vac, December 10, 6 to 9 p.m. Either be a member of the audience or come show us your talent. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Rivera. Ms. Sanchez, do we have anyone online?
I believe I do have, if Analisa Vargas is in the audience.
Okay.
And then after her, it will be followed by Sandra Tolento. She's on Zoom, but Analisa will help translate for her.
Yes, and also George Bohorkes.
Okay.
We have, we have a translator as well, so.
She's interpreter for them.
Oh, okay.
Giving the meanings.
Oh, okay. Ms. Vargas?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Analisa Vargas, and I've lived in the city of Indio for the last 10 years. My community is located in North Indio. It includes the neighborhoods, schools, parks, and businesses located on both sides of the I-10 freeway. It includes Amistad High School, Jackson Elementary. I don't know if Eisenhower Elementary is still, if it's open, and Richard Oliphant Elementary School. The major streets are Golf Center Drive, Jackson Street, Monroe Avenue 42, 44, and Highway 111. I've lived in various parts of India over the years. For example, I lived in smoke tree apartments between 2011 through the end of 2015. I currently reside in Desert Trace, where my parents bought a home in 2014. Although I would like to purchase a home, there are no affordable options. Currently, the only housing options in this area are single-family homes that range from the mid-400 to 500,000s. Many young families and professionals face the same challenge when searching for affordable housing in the city of Indio. Affordable housing, healthy food options, clean air, and green spaces to recreate and congregate as a community are important to us. My community includes working families, young professionals, and retired individuals, the majority of which are Latinx. It's a fast-growing area with new businesses popping up frequently. There are small businesses, restaurants, some commercial centers, and a few small parks in my community. There are children that play or recreate in the street or in the cul-de-sacs, but there aren't very, like, many parks nearby. They ride their bikes, scooters, walk in the neighborhood, play football. I often see people walking or jogging on the sidewalks off Jackson Street and Avenue 42. I have a young daughter who's 13 months and loves to explore and be outdoors. She now gets bored of being in the front and backyard, so I often drive to a park so she can have more space to play. There is a trail in the center of my neighborhood, but there are no sidewalks or large green spaces. Community parks, green spaces for everyone to enjoy are also very important to my community. I invited community residents who are very interested in participating in today's public, a redistricting public hearing, but most were either working or had other commitments. According to the Fair Maps Act, at least one of the public hearings should be held on a weekend. And so I had recommended that it be held on a Saturday evening to accommodate community residents that are unable to make it on a weekday. So like youth and some of other individuals that, like I mentioned, they're just, you know, they're, they're still at work. They get out like at 7:00. And so on behalf of those residents, I would like to also ask, what is the deadline to submit community of interest testimony? And then also, what, when will the mapping tool be up so that we're able to prepare draft maps to submit? Thank you so much, right on time.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas.
And if Mayor, if you're okay, I'd like to have Sandra Tolento on Zoom. And she will speak and she will translate for her.
Absolutely.
That's okay.
Do my best. Sandra?
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sandra Tolento. He ha vivido en la ciudad de Indio por los últimos siete años. Mi comunidad está ubicada entre el centro de Indio, la cual incluye el Boulevard de Doctor Carrion y Avenida Miles.
My name is Sandra Tolento. I've lived in the city of Indio for the last seven years. The major streets include Indio Boulevard, Doctor Carrion, and Monroe Street.
Donde podemos encontrar áreas comerciales, escuelas, como Doctor Carrion Elementary School, Indio Middle School, la preparatoria de Indio, entre otras.
And there's commercial centers, the schools that are, the schools there are, Doctor Carrion, I forgot the name of the school, I'm sorry, Carrion. And I don't.
I think she said Indio Middle.
Indio Middle School and Indio High.
Thank you, Sandra.
También apartamentos e estudios de bajos ingresos como Montevideo y Silavista Apartments. De clase media tenemos Warwick, Andorra, entre otros. Las fechas principales de mi comunidad son Highway 111 y calle Monroe.
So the street that she currently resides on are Highway 111 and Monroe. And she mentioned the different apartments that are in her area, and she did a great job, so I wouldn't repeat all the apartments.
And some.
Yes, mi comunidad está formada por familias latinas de clase trabajadora. Los miembros de mi comunidad trabajan en servicios de jardinería, construcción, tiendas comestibles como Full Foles, Walmart, El Súper, y restaurantes de comunidad rápida.
And so most of the families are Latino, working-class families. And they work at different, from gardening to fast-food restaurants. ¿Qué más dijiste, Sandra? Yeah, supermarkets.
Yes, Full Foles, Walmart, El Súper. En estos siete años, he tiene la oportunidad de disfrutar esta bella ciudad con su tradicional feria de tata y el festival de tamal, pero a su misma vez.
So Sandra has opportunity to enjoy the festivals that are happening in our, in our community, and like the date festival, the tamal festival, but.
Como madre de familia, al igual que muchas otras, tenemos la necesidad de viajar a ciudades vecinas.
But at the same time, as a mother, she knows, she feels that there's things that are lacking in the city that are in other cities, neighboring cities.
Para poder salir con nuestras familias a un parque de calidad.
She would like quality parks.
Debido que no contamos con parques seguros para nuestros niños.
And we can't count on being able to have safe parks for her children.
Donde puedan jugar libremente sin peligro de ser expuestos.
Without being able to play, you know, freely play, without having, having any, like, with, you know, for it to be a safe place for them to play.
Familias que han tenido que moverse a otra ciudad debido a poder, para poder tener la posibilidad de un hogar accesible para sus familias.
So she's also witnessed families that have been displaced due to the fact that there is no lack of affordable housing?
En mi comunidad, nuestras familias, nuestros niños son la prioridad.
In her family, the children are the priority?
Y como tal, estamos, esa seguridad, a parques limpios.
And because of that, we definitely need safe and clean parks?
Completos libres de drogas.
That are, you know, have the full amenities and that are free of drugs.
Ms. Vargas, her time's up, so if you can.
Okay.
Endigentes.
Sí, sí dice que tu tiempo ha aspirado, pero sé que estábamos traduciendo, pero ya casi.
Solo tengo tres.
Sí.
Hay endigentes para nuestros hijos para puedan jugar, disfrutar, y crecer así ya que los voy a nacer.
So she just wants the quality, you know, safe places for her children, especially in an area where they're growing up.
Great.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, and thank you for helping us with that.
Thank you.
And I believe there's Jorge Bohorkes in person.
Mr. Bohorkes?
Hello.
You have three minutes. You have three minutes, sir?
Yes, of course, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is my first time participating in an event like this. It's a very wholesome and welcome community. Anyways, my name is George Bohorkes. I've lived in the city of India for 24 years now. My community is located in central India and includes Highway 111 Commercial Area, Indio High School, Indio Teen Center, Indio Senior Center, and the India Recreation Center with its adjacent park. Let's see here, lost my placing. My community also includes Andorra Apartments, where I live with my family, Silovista Apartments, Los Arboles Apartments, and the surrounding residential neighborhoods on Shadow Palm Avenue. The major streets are Monroe Street, Avenue 46, and Clinton Street. My community consists of the working-class families. Members of my community work at grocery stores like Fuelfoles, El Super, fast food restaurants, and small businesses, business, is my bad, like Marshalls Fashion Cleaning, and now jobs for rights, stability, or good benefits, and many have to seek other job employment opportunities. Most of my community live in multi-generational homes. Also, it is very common for multiple families to live in one apartment or a single-family home. It is also common for families to rent out a room in order to help ends meet. Fair and affordable housing is important to my community. I grew up utilizing the resources around me, like the recreation center and the teen center. It was very critical to my upbringing to have these extracurricular activities. Ensuring that our youth have healthy activities that are accessible to them is very important to my community. Green spaces and parks are also very essential to my community, but we don't have enough of them. Being that my community is very centralized in the city, it creates a lot of traffic, especially when school begins and ends. There are many children and teens and families that are either walking or driving in that area. Therefore, it's very important for my community to have extra safety measures, like walking guards or traffic control. The after-school scene can be very chaotic, and we want to ensure everyone's safety. Poverty is a major problem in the community. We are molded by our imminent environment. Not all young people have positive influences in their lives, which could lead to bad decisions. I've seen many talented youth go down the wrong pathways of this. We need to create more spaces and opportunities for youth to flourish and thrive in the city of India. Well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bohorkes. Ms. Sanchez, do we have any more comments?
I have no other comments, either in person or in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So now, since there's no more comments, I will close the public hearing and like to open it up for our council to comment on what they see fit as keeping the community together, whether it's schools, supermarkets, shopping districts, canals, major highways. So I'd like to ask the council for input as we have a consultant here and we move
And if I can jump in, what we're looking at is if you see any communities of interest that are not together right now, that should be. And so that's the feedback that we want to give to our consultant, and he can, if I'm saying, stating anything incorrectly, he can jump in. But this is the purpose of this hearing, is to look at whether there are some communities of interest that may be in different districts right now, or may be not cohesive. So that's the feedback we're looking for, is that right, Jeff? I think we'll have to hand up.
We'll start with a council member, Emi. She has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. I know that last time we set on the district boundaries, there were some communities of interest that were split. But without having the maps in front of us, it's kind of hard to make comments on it at this time. I think that if the consultant is open to receiving comments from us after we've had time to sit down with the existing map, that would be a much more productive conversation. Because I don't believe that we can just say that all communities of interest will follow school district, not school district, school boundaries or shopping center boundaries, because our city evolved in a very unique way. It grew from the center of town, which is where the downtown commercial district is, and kind of spread outward. So communities of interest were created as eras and eras of our city evolution occurred. So it's not necessarily connected to shopping centers or school boundaries, and would need a little bit more time for us to be able to sit down and articulate that to the consultant.
Okay, thank you, council member. Councilmember Ortiz, do you have any comments or suggestions for the consultant as we move forward?
Yes, first, I just wanted to thank our residents for the feedback and the input. I definitely agree with some of their concerns of especially affordable housing and the improvements to our parks, and I hope we can take that into consideration as we move forward with our strategic plan and what funding we're going to put into those items that we talked about yesterday. So based on some of that feedback, but also based on, just in general, looking at these maps, I think two of the things that come to mind for me is if we can also see average income when we're looking at these numbers. I know we had a lot of numbers based on ethnicity, but I would also like to see average income and also average age, because I think different age of families are looking for different things, right? So it's different if you have a retirement community compared to a community of people of younger families who may have lower incomes or are looking for different amenities in their neighborhoods. So average income and average age of citizens is two of the things that I would like to see as numbers for when we're looking at how we're splitting up these districts. One of the areas that I did see a big difference was, is in my district, when you're crossing Highway 111, I think that tends to be more of a retirement community compared to the rest of our district. So maybe we could take a look at that area. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, so I didn't put them into the presentation, but as part of the census data, we have what, data what's called from the American Community Survey, and it's a more detailed census data. It's not sent out to everybody, it's sent out to, I believe, 1 in 15 or 1 in 17 residents. But we get data that the council member was requesting. So we have data on average income. We don't necessarily have specific age data, but we have percentages of children present within the district or children living at home. And we also can get percentages too by census block of residents who live in multifamily settings. So we can get all that data, and I can put those thematic maps together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to correct myself, Mayor Protim, it's Mayor Protim Ortiz, not council member. We're glad to get used to that. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think we did a fairly good job when we did the maps last time. I think we did it a lot by interest, based on the way that the city was set up at the time, using major fairloads of roads, school districts, and the boundaries of gated communities and other communities that were pretty much of interest, like downtown's pretty much stayed together. The only thing I see on this one here compared to what you're talking about is it looks like we need to shave off a couple of areas in District 1, maybe a little bit in District 2 in that same area, and add it to District 4. There's a couple of communities there that I think would blend in with Community 4 a little bit better, once you see the maps and you look at it. They have the same kind of interest and the same areas that they utilize. So I think that's where Mayor Protim Ortiz is talking about, is making sure that we have the communities of interest. If you have families together looking for parks, are they going to be able to have that same voice in the area? Even though we all do agree on a lot of these issues, you know, there are communities of areas that want specific things, and that representation is something they need. So I'm looking forward to the maps, and we'll be able to do a lot more from there.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Holmes?
You know, I agree. As I'm studying this map, and I know I have a much larger map in the office, I recall when we went through the process that we tried to make a concerted effort to keep entire, you know, neighborhoods intact. I don't know that we are 100% successful, and I think to that end, I'd like to go back and take a look, a closer look, and probably drive the city a little bit to see, you know, if there's some areas that need to be packaged. But we also have the numbers that we have to, requirements that we have to meet as well, to make sure there's inequality amongst the community. So I will make the commitment to drive around a little bit and try to refresh my memory on the parameters of each of these districts.
Thank you, councilmember Holmes. I like to ask, when will the mechanism or maps be available for the community? Because I think the community input is going to be vital on how we make decisions moving forward. I mean, the people live in these communities, so they know what's attached and what shouldn't be attached. And so I want to gauge it from there. And also, if we make that available to our community, will it be on the website? Or also, the income and age and those things, that information's out there, the data's out there. So is there a way we could just connect that to these maps so folks can have an idea when they're looking at these maps, what those incomes are? So maybe that's something that they could also use when they're submitting that information. And one more thing is, it was brought up by one of the speakers about weekend meetings. I think that would be vital too, to have some more engagement. I would like to hear from some of our younger folks and some folks who are unable to make it due to work or other reasons. So I think looking at that schedule, looking at a weekend would be an idea.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, that's something that we could consider, doing a community workshop or something like that. Obviously up to the council to give us direction on that, but that's something that other cities have done and we could consider. In terms of the thematic maps that you asked for, maybe what we can do is, I can add those into the presentation, we can just turn that into a PDF and then put that onto our redistricting portion of the website. I can make that over the next couple of days. Those are easy to do. In terms of the public mapping tool, I'll be speaking with Roxanne and the city manager here over the next couple of days. Just want to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of the mapping tool that we want to use, but we can do a relatively quick turnaround on that, probably in the next week or two.
Great. Well, I appreciate that, appreciate the presentation.
And I think, once we have the public mapping tool up, I understand that residents can submit their own maps. I mean, that's the tools there for them to use.
Yes.
And it gets submitted through the mapping tool, is that correct?
Yes. And then, so what we'll do is, we'll take those maps, and then during the draft map hearings, what we'll do is, we'll assign a numerical number to each one of the maps that we get submitted, so that we can go back and say, okay, I want to look at map 107, or, so that we know there's a particular order. And also, what we'll do, we usually see when maps get submitted that there's a particular theme that's associated with it. So if there are maps that are similar in the theme and the way that they're drawn, we'll put those together and say, okay, the next two or three maps are an iteration of this theme. So you guys can take a look at that, kind of by blocks.
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, I wasn't here when we did the last map, but I know from looking at our map, our city has evolved. A lot of folks have moved into the community, there's been more development, you know, so it's going to be interesting looking and see where we go from here. But I just think the component of community input is going to be important moving forward. So council, if no one has any further.
I would like to make another question. I actually just wanted to follow up on a question from one of our residents. They had two questions, which one was, what is the deadline for input on the community of interest testimony? And the second one was, when will the tool for drawing the maps be up?
Yeah, so as we discussed, I'm going to circle back with Roxanne and the city manager on the mapping tool. And once we kind of get the green light on which mapping tool you want to use, there's some lead time, depending on which one you want to use, but one of them we can get up pretty quickly. In terms of the communities of interest, you guys can continue to give us feedback. And if there are particular communities that you want to identify, what we can do is draw them into the mapping tool, and just, we can put them again as part of the presentation. You know, I could make a map similar to the thematic maps that I'm going to make and put that into the PDF, the presentation, so that people can see when they're considering their districts, you know, maybe those areas that you guys have identified, if any, that you want to keep together as part of the process, the thought process I'm going through on how they want to draw their maps.
And then, and members of the public can submit any information on their communities of interest?
Yes.
They could submit a letter to the city clerk, and she'll collect those, and we'll have that as part of the record as well.
Sure, or, you know, you want to send an email or something like that.
Or email to the clerk.
I think the question is, what's the deadline?
So the community of interest information is used to put together a draft map. And so our next public hearing in January will be that first draft map. So it's as if we'll be collecting, the consultant will be working with myself, and we'll be collecting the data, and then the consultant will look at all that data gathered by the community, gathered by the council members, to put together the first draft map. And then he'll present that. I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, just one other suggestion that I would say, if we're looking at expanding District 4, two areas that I would look at would be the corner, the intersection of Clinton and Fred Wayne, and also the areas north of the high school.
I'm sorry, north of what?
Of the high school.
Of the high school?
And which high school is that? Indian High School. Indian High School.
Yeah, that's currently in District 5, and I never understood why they put that in District 5, because it makes sense to be in District 4. And there's also a portion of District 4 that naturally blends with District 5, which is south of Avenue 48, is it?
Yeah.
So that's why I said, I need a little more time to take a look at these from last time, because there were some obvious communities that were split up. And I'd be happy to get my comments in within the next week to the city attorney.
Yeah.
Great, and we hope to have that mapping tool up, hopefully by next week, if we can, you know, if that's, it's Wednesday now, so as soon as we can. And that'll be on our redistricting website, and we'll post on social media, and we'll use our banners on our website to let the public know and the community know when the mapping tool is up and running. And yes, and any deadlines for submittal.
Great. All right, thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
All right. This doesn't require any motion, so the council will receive and file this and report from staff. So what we'll do now, we'll circle back to item number 10, was report on city council, external and internal boards, and we'll continue with councilmember Ortiz, excuse me, Mayor
Thank you. Let me pull up my notes just a second here. Thank you, Mayor. I had a meeting with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Energy and Environment Committee. Tom Kurt gave us an update that the federal government has included CV Sync and broadband infrastructure in its 18 projects for its broadband initiative, but we're still waiting to see how much funding exactly will be given for these efforts. And CV Sync is a project to add synchronized streetlights on Highway 111, Ramon Road, and Washington Street to reduce traffic, and also includes laying down broadband infrastructure with those replacements. We also had a presentation from OM Connect, which is partnering with SoCal Edison to give free smart thermostats to residents to help in reducing their electricity use. This technology also alerts you when there is high strain on the power system, so it can help prevent power outages and help reduce the use of extra power plants that need to come on during high demand. And this would lower energy costs for everyone in the long term. IID was also in that meeting, and they are looking for an opportunity to provide this service to IID customers as well. We also got an update on the new, in the Empire Regional Energy Network. This is C-VAC teaming up with San Bernardino and Western Riverside to form.